And here to start us off is Minister Betty Nickerson from New Light Ministry Church. So Minister Nickerson, if you don't mind coming to the podium, we're very grateful that you're here to start us with an invocation.
Now I'm gonna do a little something different.
Okay.
If you all could get close together and join hands, please. Everyone hear me? Can you all do the same? Dear heavenly Father, we come unto thee once again, thanking you for your grace and your mercy, most of all your love. Father God, we thank you for allowing us to be able to assemble here together and knowing that you are the head of this meeting and that your blessing is upon it and that you're gonna have the angels here to make sure that everything go all right. Father God, help us to be on one accord and that your will be done, not ours but your will. And Father God, I ask that this prayer go beyond the ceiling unto your ears and to your heart, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Minister. Thank you very much. You would like to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, where no shame under God is visible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first thing on our agenda today is Item 1A, reviewing your agenda packets. Were there anything, any item, any, lacking any item, anything you needed information on right up front, council?
No, Mayor, are you not?
No, Mayor.
Okay.
I think mine.
Okay.
Is it on? Some are on, some aren't.
Testing. Yes, it's on now.
I don't hear you, though.
You don't hear mine?
Oh, no.
Yeah, I hear some.
Yeah. I'm good now, thank you.
Okay.
Public address.
Oh, thank you, Stephanie. I forgot about it. Well, let's now do the public address portion of our meeting. I'll hand that to Stephanie Coggins, our City Secretary.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for participating in today's city council meeting. Your inputs and your opinions are important to us, and we are glad that you are with us to share them. At each posted meeting, we invite our fellow community members to address city council regarding posted agenda items. Every speaker will have three minutes to address the council. At the end of two and a half minutes, you'll hear a single beep, alerting you to 30 seconds left to wrap up your thoughts. And we do request you stay within the three minutes allotted. Speakers are asked to limit your comments to items on today's posted agenda. We also have several public hearings on the agenda today. If you are here to speak on an item with a public hearing, we ask that you make your comment either during the public hearing or during public address, but not both, in order to help us keep accurate records. It's your decision on when you would like to give those comments. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and whether or not you live in the Amarillo city limits, and please state if you are speaking for, on, or against the agenda items. Our first speaker today is Michael Conklin, and so I would invite him up to the podium. And after Mr. Conklin is Mike Ford.
My comment would be on line item four. This is a building off Grant Street. I made an agreement with a guy four years ago, actually five years ago, to purchase that property for $125,000. I was able to get a facade grant with Center City to renovate that. My partner, who, he, he said, hey, let's renovate the building, let's renovate 501, let's renovate 517, and increase the value of that building to help it sell. Last year, went through a judicial foreclosure, and it was dissolved in Trust 1 and purchased in Trust 2 with the same partner. I think he bought the building for 440, and then I agreed to buy 509 for 500,000, and then now he wants 1.6. So I think, you know, I've got a purchase agreement on it, and I think the city, that's the property I believe the city wants to buy. And the tiers, the tier zone 1, I believe? Do you know anything about that? So now I found a buyer for 1.6 million, and then the buyer was told to back down by the bank because the city really wants the building. So my question would be, is there a way to buy 509 South Grant for 500,000? Because I've got currently, I've got $300,000 invested in it, so there's kind of a lot going on with this, but if you have any questions about it, I can answer those. And there is a contractor's lien on the building, too, for 300,000. It's all ahead. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Conklin. And next, Mr. Ford. And Mr. Ford is our final speaker today.
I know why you skipped public address, because you saw me. Ford didn't slip, right? I'm just kidding. That was a joke.
I'm laughing. That's a good joke.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Let's see if I can get the hot mic a little closer. Wait till everybody has a copy. Madam Mayor, city council members, my name is Mike Ford. I'm a resident of Amarillo, and I was here at the last meeting. And the reason I'm here back again is to clarify a few things. Number one is, in the meeting minutes, I don't think that's an accurate depiction or description of what I spoke on or spoke against. I did not speak against public address or the numbering of ordinances on the agenda, so I'm hopeful that can get corrected. What I did speak on, and Madam Mayor, I'd asked for a conversation, and then after I left, you had a conversation with Mr. City Attorney, and that was in regard to whether or not you're following the law in regard to Open Meetings Act, and that was exactly what I wanted to have a conversation on, and I'm a little surprised that there was a conversation that you characterized was something we couldn't have. But this, until a year ago, this was displayed, this is in your packets, this is displayed up on these screens in this room during public comment, and this is the exact correct interpretation of the Open Meetings Act law. And basically, if I come up here to talk about something on the agenda, Mayor Protem, you and I can have a conversation on that legally. If there's not on the agenda, you and I cannot have a conversation on that legally. And the city, someone may state, make a statement of facts, but that's it. But this is the correct interpretation. What Mr. City Attorney is saying is not the incorrect interpretation. You cannot pick and choose which part of the Open Meetings Act you want to follow. I had also made a query on, and I've got, you've got, you've got, you've had this once before, if you want to read it again, read it again. There is a, the Open Meetings Act training here from, from the Attorney General's office starts, that link I gave you starts exactly where she talks about 551042 and what I'm talking about today. And if you haven't had that training, shame on you. The other thing I had requested was a copy of the proceedings for the passage of 7985. What I got was a section in 1201028 of the, of the government code, talking about procedures to pass, that you may pass or skip. It says you can skip a second reading or a second meeting to pass. Didn't say anything about skipping the first public hearing or actually having a written ordinance in front of you to pass, or anything along those lines. So again, Mr. City Attorney's theory on the legality of the proceedings of 7985 is flawed. I think the court has held that. I don't think the court's come out with an official judgment, but that was certainly some of the comments out of the court last week. And so to the extent, to the extent that the ordinance enactment was followed, I can think you can make a very strong case that it was not followed. And Mr. City Manager, your job, your number one job according to ordinance, the municipal code, is to make sure, ensure that all laws of the state and the city are followed, and it's clearly specified there. So I'm certainly hopeful that there can be another conversation as to why that was not done. Maybe, maybe, maybe we explain, maybe we lay out our legal theory in 7985, we're gonna skip all these things because government code A says this and government code B says that. I think in terms of leadership and openness, in terms of your government, overall governance, that's the proper conversation to have. Explain to people why you're not following the ordinance, because the government code says you don't have to, under what stipulations, what chapter, what verse, right? And then come back and say, and this is why we're doing it, as opposed to saying we're in a really big hurry, we don't even have a written ordinance. You know, that, that's the thing from a leadership openness transparency, that's what we do, and we don't find ourselves in court. And, and this is happening too much, and I appreciate your time.
Mr. Ford, thank you for your comments. And Mayor, that concludes public address.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, just for clarification, the council had a written ordinance in front of them on that day when we voted on it, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Item 1B on the agenda is discuss solid waste departmental update. Mr. City Manager?
Hi, Mayor. We have a brief presentation from Director of Public Works, Donnie Hooper, but we also have built in plenty of time to answer any questions council has. This is a very important, but also very sensitive topic that we want to discuss, so, Donnie, take it away.
All right, thank you so much. Mayor, council, we have a presentation to give today. The purpose of the presentation for you today is to discuss some of the challenges that we're having currently in solid waste, also discuss some of the solutions that we've come up with and that we've already implemented in solid waste, and then moving forward, discuss implementation of a new plan, as well as discuss future evaluations of this program. Just to kind of give you a background of some of the challenges that we've been facing in solid waste, our staffing levels, just as everybody is seeing right now across the board, not only here at the city of Amarillo, but in the city of Amarillo and other industries all around the globe, we're seeing staffing level shortages. We've consistently struggled since COVID began to have a full staff in solid waste, and that's in all areas of public works as well. And I have some numbers I can show you here in just a moment to kind of break down that staffing level. Some of the other challenges we've had is we've had a high number of missed service calls that, because of the staffing levels, and I'm sure that you're aware of that, I know that you've received some calls as well as we have, especially over the past three to four weeks, those have been ramped up. That's led to some customer service dissatisfaction and issues at a, at a higher level than we're used to seeing. We also had to look at all of the different things that we've been challenged with in solid waste, and one of them that we talked about this week was the high number of permits that we have for rideaway permits. We have received this year, according to CP and DE, over 400 rideaway permits. That's a pretty elevated number than what we're used to seeing. And when that happens, it forces our trash truck drivers to alternate their route. They have to either go to where the dumpsters are at in the street, or they have to find the different location that they place those dumpsters. Every little minute counts for the routes that they're out on their 10-hour shift out there. So that's one of the things that has, has delayed us in our efficiency. We also are still dealing with illegal dumping, and I think we're doing a good job of tackling that, but everywhere that we have areas of repetitive illegal dumping, those routes are a lot slower than they would be in an area that doesn't have the illegal dumping, just because of the maneuverability. Sometimes a driver has to get out and move a mattress or move something out of the way. We heard a story the other day from route coordinator that had a refrigerator inside of a dumpster, that he had to have someone come remove the refrigerator just so he could pick it up. We have dumpsters where there's concrete inside of them, they have to call someone out to remove the concrete before they can lift it up. So all those things are challenges that we're faced with. And also, delivery of our new solid waste equipment. Just so you have an idea of what we're facing in replacement equipment right now, we have several trucks that are ready for replacement, and we even have an ASL that's ready to come into the fleet as well. That ASL was ordered in April of 2021, and we still don't have it. Its delivery date is expected to be in October. We also, in April of 2021, ordered seven solid waste side loaders for our residential collections. Those are not expected until December of this year. So we're a year and a half out on equipment. We just recently, council just recently approved some more equipment. I think we have three side loaders and two front loaders that have been ordered just within the past month, and they're saying 14 to 16 months on delivery of those. So that's another challenge we face, because when that equipment is old as it is, to be ready to be replaced, they have to make the equipment last a little bit longer, they're just facing trouble. And sometimes, even in our fleet department, to get just a cylinder to repair, the compactor on one of the dumpsters, our trucks, one of the side loader trucks, takes them six to eight weeks to get that in. And there's the backorder process, and we're trying to shelve those, that they're constantly battling as well. So the supply and demand has really affected us as far as repairs, and then of course with replacement of equipment. So those things are just some of the challenges that we faced over the past couple of years. Some of the solutions that we have already implemented, and I want to spend some time talking about this, because what we're talking about today is going to once-a-week collections. It was absolutely the last resort out of any, any solution that we could come up with. It was probably the last and the bottom of the list for us. So we, we had pay increases for our CDL drivers that took place back in December. We raised that rate to $16 an hour. We saw that that helped a little bit, but it didn't help as much as we thought that it would. When the industry is paying much more than that, it's really tough to keep those, those people coming in, especially when they have a CDL attached to that. We have attended at least a minimum of nine job fairs in solid waste, and when they go to a job fair, they go full bang. They have everything and flyers, and they really enjoy going to these because it's an opportunity for them to get some more employees. We have seen a few employees come into our solid waste department because of that, but I would say the CDL drivers were really minimal with what we saw in our recruiting efforts at those job fairs. We've advertised on TV, social media, our communications has done, department has done a great job in helping us try to get the word out. HR has done a great job in helping us promote the positions that are open, not only in solid waste, but across the city. We've combined all of our equipment operators into one equipment operator position, and in solid waste, what that means is we had equipment operator ones, twos, that were specifically assigned to a certain task. We wanted to eliminate that, so we combined all of those into what's called an equipment operator. So now, with cross-training, you can drive a side loader, you can drive a front loader, you can drive a knuckle boom truck for front yard collections, you can drive a rear loader truck. Wherever we need you the most, we're gonna be able to place you in those, those spots, juggling of those operators and putting them in positions where they would be most effective for not only our programs, but the program goals that we have, that we've established to this council and to the community of this is the service that we're providing. We've also cross-trained those equipment operators. We've discussed contract services. That was something that I had a conversation, Alan and I had a conversation with DJ Lee with Republic Services, and this was just a brainstorming session that we had a couple of weeks ago with them, letting them know about our challenges, where we were at, what solutions they were using, where they were at in their operations. And I was very surprised to hear that, being the largest solid waste company in North America, they're facing the same exact issues that we're facing. Their staffing levels are down, their service levels are hard to reach, and he just said, hey, if you have some solutions for us, we would love to hear what those are, too. So it was a long conversation, we're not finished with that conversation. I think we can, all in the industry here, can help each other to come up with solutions. But that one was scratched off the list, that the possibility of going out for an RFP and maybe getting some services from contractors, much as what we're doing in parks and other departments, was just off the table because they're, they're having the same issues that we are. We placed all available personnel and equipment, and what I mean by that in solid waste is that there are supervisors that are over the residential routes, we have supervisors over the commercial routes, supervisors over all of the different services that we have. If you're a coordinator, supervisor, an assistant superintendent, and even the superintendent, if you have a CDL, you're gonna get in a truck and you're gonna drive it. And what we realized, and we've really had this great realization, especially in the past few weeks, is those desk jobs are so important in coordinating the efforts that are going on out there in the field. If they don't have someone sitting in the office ensuring that those routes are completed, ensuring that the work is being done, it's really difficult to keep up with where we're at out there. Makes a lot of sense, we talked to the coordinator that's over residential services last week, does a great job, and he's very frustrated because he's in a truck 11 hours a day, and we said, you know, where's the accountability with where we're at with our drivers? How are we ensuring that we're getting our routes done? And he said, I can't, I'm in a truck all day. And you can see the tears welling up in his eyes when he's telling us his story. He says, I'm tired, and he said, my family's tired, we're all tired, we've been working long and hard. And I will say this about all of them, they, they haven't complained, and they work, they work and work and work and work and work, and we're still falling further behind. And I'll show you those numbers here in a minute, and we can talk about that. But we have placed everybody that we can think of in equipment to get them to run. Alan and I said, if we had our CDLs, we would be out driving it, you know, and helping them out, but we don't unfortunately, so we're not out there in the field with them. We have also, Floyd had a great idea a few weeks ago, and that was, let's give them a break when they come into our transfer station. When they're dropping off below the transfer station, let's let them get out of their truck and rest for five minutes, let's let them rest for five, 10 minutes, whatever it takes. When they come to the transfer station, they have to rake out the back of their trucks, they have to clean off the back where the, where the hopper goes back closed, or the back door closes on the hinges, they have to clean all that stuff out. So we've placed utility workers out there to do that for them, so that they can stop. We have a place where they can get a drink station, cool down just a little bit, just something to motivate them and tell them, thank you for what you're doing, and let them continue with their day. So that was a great idea that we've just recently implemented, and I think that, that helps. We've had mandatory overtime for everybody, which leads to a lot of call-ins, where people call in and say, you know, I'm just, I'm not feeling well today, or whatever it is, and a lot of times it's because they're tired. But we've implemented that. We've also changed our routing for efficiency, and one thing that our new superintendent, Ricky Rivera, noticed was that there's a lot of trucks that are working on the west side of town, that they're closer to the landfill than they are to the transfer station. Let's just go ahead and take those to the landfill instead of having them come to the transfer station just for efficiency, because every little minute on those routes counts in order for them to be completed with them. So those are, those are the items that we have implemented over the past couple of years to try to resolve the issues that we have in solid waste. This is the numbers. This is, this is not current as of this week, but it's, it's pretty, pretty steady in this. On the left column you see here, this is our, our workload indicators. This is what we look at every week. We have 69,000 residential accounts that we service in solid waste. We have 61 residential routes that we run. We have 675 household hand pickups, 18,000 residential dumpsters, 6,432 poly carts that we collect every week, so. And, and this is just a portion of the services that we have in solid waste. It's kind of wanting to highlight what the biggest jobs that they have to do out there, and those are numbers that we look at often. Our solid waste staffing levels, we have 104 employees out of 160 right now. When you break that down, and we talked earlier about equipment operators being able to be juggled back and forth between different groups, well, in residential, we have 20 of 42 side load drivers, that's less than half of what we need in order to complete twice-a-week collections. In commercial, we have 14 of 16. Commercial is a little bit different in the fact that those customers actually pay for how many collections they're gonna have a week. They may have two, they may have three, they may have four, they may have six, whatever they have, that's exactly what they're paying. So, so we, we try to keep the commercial side as full as we can when we're juggling those employees, but we have had commercial employees, when they're done at the end of the day, help us with residential. Our alley collection crews, five of eight, so that's almost at 50%. Curbside is less than 50%. Transfer trucks, those are the ones that go from the transfer station out to the landfill, they're at 50%, and our, our ASL cart truck drivers are at 50%. So we have nowhere else in solid waste to grab somebody to fill a need inside of a truck. We've, we've done that. Our public works staffing levels overall, we have 406 positions in public works, we've, we've filled 277 of those as of last week, at 68%. The, I put drainage utility fleet, streets and traffic on here to show you that the two divisions that have CDL drivers are drainage utility and streets. There's nowhere within those, even though we've talked about, could we take some street employees, cross-train them and put them in a truck? They have 63 of 95, their service levels are suffering as well. Drainage utility is at 50%, 15 of 32, their service levels are suffering as well. So they don't have a CDL position to give up. In traffic, we have 61 of 69 positions filled, but what's interesting about that is traffic has, there are some desk jobs in the engineering side of it, and in the operations side of it, they don't require CDLs. They have one position that requires a CDL, and that's driving the striper truck, and that position is the most difficult to fill. We're constantly looking for someone to fill that position, so it goes right back to the same story, it's the CDL positions that we're struggling with. So I want to kind of give you an overview of that. The next slide is just something, I wanted, I wanted to show you this just to give you an idea of the data that we collect and analyze in public works. This is data that I look at weekly. We have a wonderful staff. Miranda has created these dashboards with the data that we've asked for from all of our public works divisions, so that we can look at it and stay on top of what's going on in all of those. And so this is just another one of those things that we look at as a tool to see where we're at, how we're providing our services, and what we can do better, whether we need to go back to the drawing board and start all over again. But this is the last week's numbers. We had 275 missed residential collections, that was a big red flag to me. That number usually, looking back a couple of years ago, that was around 20, 25. These are call-ins that, that people are calling in, but 20 to 25 of those, 275 is pretty high. We had 31 commercial, we missed four poly carts as well. And then we also have our dumpster repair side. We have a crew that's repairing dumpsters, they're short-staffed as well. And our, our open alley work orders, which I know is near and dear to everybody, that's where we're collecting our illegal dumping. We have 332 open in that area as well. And then our curbside collections, we, we compare back the last four years to where we've been, to where we're at now, to see if our levels are moving up, they're moving down. Are we gonna be able to, you know, look at those trends and see when we're gonna need to bump up our staffing levels in our front yard collection program as well? So I really just want to put this in here more just for information, that we, we're constantly analyzing the data and looking at what we have, especially in solid waste, and it's a lot of how we've arrived at the decision that we are at today. I wanted to just show you on the next slide, the ordinance and what it says. The proposed change will not require an ordinance change of any kind. Our ordinance basically for collections specifies that we will collect a minimum, I'm sorry, a maximum of a normal twice a week and a minimum of once a week. We're obviously not in normal times right now with our staffing levels, we're very abnormal times, but the ordinance basically says we're gonna do one or two collections. If it's normal, we'll do two, minimum of one a week on there. Interestingly enough, I did do a little research with staff, did some research for me. We, we reached out to some of the communities that are around us to see how many of them were doing once-a-week collections, and, and this is prefaced with, we have to look at other communities, not by size of community, but by service. In other words, if you've got alleys and dumpsters that compares to what we're doing, a person is gonna generate the same amount of trash whether you live there or you live here. So we, we used Borger, Pampa, Dumas, and Plainview, they all have once-a-week collection in every one of those, and their rates are much higher than ours are. We're the lowest rate out of all of those.
I want to caveat that by saying, none of what we're saying is, is requesting to move permanently to once, once-a-week pickups. We understand that's a very valuable quality of life that we can deliver, and we want to deliver that. So, keep going, Donnie.
Yes, sir. You know, but, but once a week does not mean either that we're gonna limit the customers on what they're gonna be placing in the dumpster. the customers on what they're going to be placing in the dumpster. They're still going to generate the same amount of trash that they generate now. So on the next slide, this is our proposed change. Once a week service for residential collections. We would not change our commercials, we'd not change our poly carts or hand collection routes at this time. We really can't change our hand collection routes at all due to the nature of that business. Our commercials, obviously, I told you why we couldn't really change that at all. Our parley carts, we can't change, but we'll evaluate that as we move through and just see where we're at on that, should the need arise, and we need to evaluate it like we needed to evaluate a residential. But as Jared mentioned, the change is temporary. We have a target number of 36 employees. We're 20 now. If we can reach 36, and I'll show you on a chart in just a moment how that breaks down. It's not a chart, but there's a description of how this breaks down. Once we reach 36, we can move back to the twice a week collections with no problem at all. So the proposed is that we would do our A routes on Monday and Tuesday, our B routes on Thursday and Friday. And what that means to you as a customer is that if you're used to being collected on Monday and Thursday, now you're going to be collected on Monday or Tuesday. If you're a Tuesday or Friday, you would be collected on Thursday or Friday. That's how that would work. What we would propose is having 15 drivers assigned to cover every residential route. We'd have the five remaining drivers to be able to float and help out with those. Now, you're not going to have the 20 every day, that's the other key to this. And we don't, we can't guarantee we're going to have 20 drivers every day. There's people that take vacations, people that are sick, things like that happen. But the five would be able to cover any services that we missed. Our coordinators and supervisors will be able to go back to their jobs and do what they do, coordinate these things, and make them happen on a very efficient level. We would also be able to send those five drivers to, we have some heavy identified areas that we know that we're going to have to do more than once a week. We just know that, we've identified it. We'll also have our supervisors out patrolling those areas and creating work orders. If we see an area that gets full, or if we have a call-in that says, hey, our dumpster is full, we'll be able to go service that with those five drivers. On the next slide, this kind of breaks down the numbers for you. Right now, well, the industry standard and what we go by is that each driver would be able to collect 250 dumpsters in a 10-hour day. 25 an hour is basically what they shoot for. That's our goal every day to do that. Twice a week with 9,000 dumpsters, if we were fully staffed at 42 employees, as we're positioned for, that would be 215 dumpsters per day for each of them. That's if we're fully staffed. Currently, with 20, we're basically saying, in order to get twice a week collection done, that each driver would have to collect 450 dumpsters. Basically, what that means is about seven hours added onto their shift each. So they're already working, and that's on to a 10-hour shift. If they're working 12 now, that's putting an additional five hours on them, and it's just not possible. So, once a week collections goes down to half of that, 45 dumpsters per day would be the goal there. Current staffing level of 20 equals 225 a day that they could collect. We have a little bit of breathing room right there, and they can get all that done, we think, in a 10-hour shift with no problem at all. But again, if we increase our service levels to 36, or employee level to 36, that calculates out to 250 a day, go back to twice a week services, and we think we can do that. So there's been a lot of thought that's been put into this. We've talked it with all of the supervisors, the superintendents, the coordinators. We have picked this thing to death to try to come up with a plan that's going to work. And interestingly enough, this was our previous superintendent, the current superintendent, they've recommended this change way back, but we just kept saying, let's try to work through this as best we can. And I take that on my chin for saying, let's keep on working through this and trying to make this happen before we would have to go to a solution such as this. And they did. They tried everything that they could to do that. So that's how the numbers calculate out. The impact and the benefit of the change is that our risk associated with accidents is going to reduce. We've seen, and I'm on our driver review board, so we meet once a month along with the rest of the driver review board, and we review every accident that occurs in the city of Amarillo. And we know that fatigue, also, if you're a driver and you're involved in an accident, that's an at-fault accident, you have to come to the driver review board and talk about your incident. We know that driver fatigue in solid waste is the number one thing that every driver says. We're tired, you know, we just didn't see that, we didn't notice the gas meter, or whatever it was that happened. And I believe them. I think they really are tired. So I think our risk associated with accidents is reduced with this plan. I think our decreased workload for our drivers, obviously, is going to happen. We'll reduce our overtime, we'll have less wear on our aged equipment that we have while we're waiting on new equipment to arrive. And our service levels are temporarily going to be satisfied until our staffing levels improve. I talked to, just over the past week, there were three complaints that I took on Friday and on Saturday, and I talked to each of those and asked them the question, you know, if we could, if we went to once a week, do you feel like you're going to be overtaxed on your dumpster? And all three of them said, no. No, we could do once a week. I'm just glad you're coming once a week, because it's been 14 days since we've been collected. And that was three different people that said that to me between now and then. By the way, you know, it's even on Saturday, I got to give credit to Alan Harder back here. He has been in the midst of all this, in the operational part of this. Saturday, he was out hand picking up trash in the alleys with the supervisors, so that they could get two dumps on something that was overflowing. You know, we're dedicated, we're doing, when you've got assistant director and others that are out doing this work, even on the weekends, it's just, it's amazing to watch. But it's painful to watch too, as the director, to see that that's the level that we're at right now. This also eliminates that. So with all that, that's the benefits we see. So our other solutions, we're working on, just so you know, you know, we're not finished looking at solutions. We're reviewing our software and technology that we have in our trucks, to find a more efficient way that we can utilize technology to let us know that we've either missed, or, you know, or there's a certain area that has to be hit more than another because of analytics. We're looking at that stuff right now. There are some software that's out on the market. The problem is that most of that software is designed for street collections. It's not designed in a place where you'd have alley collections, because most mapping systems do not have a mapping layer that goes down an alley. They only have mapping layers that are on the streets. So we're working through that, and we're going to try to find some technology to put in the trucks to help them with that. And we're also evaluating the overall programs and our routing. We need to make sure that if you go to this system of once a week, that our routing is efficient as we need it to be, so that we can provide the service that we're promising to provide today. And also, our roll-off program enhancements for citizen convenience, we're talking about possibly taking our, like, right now, our roll-off program, and I didn't mention that earlier, that was new and implemented this year. We have our roll-off containers, we don't have our equipment, nor do we have the personnel that we were going to hire to run that. So it's another thing that's suffered because of this. So one of the discussions we've had is making some citizen convenience roll-off locations that are throughout the city, 24 of those, where if you have some extra trash and you need to put it in there, we can, they can be allowed to go move, put it in one of those roll-offs. Another thing that we're evaluating too, is we've already realized that there are some areas that are heavier than others. The solution may just be running out there and putting one more residential dumpster in that alley. You know, and that way, our driver can pick it up. It takes us an extra five minutes on our routes, but it's another place that we can put that. Because the ordinance basically says, you can put your trash in any dumpster in your alley. So that's another solution we're working on. Plus, our CDL program enhancements that we're working on right now, that's not on this list, but that's something else that we're working heavily on, is to making sure that in our CDL program, we're pushing people through there that can get their CDLs, and they can come out and work in the force with us as quickly as possible. So our next steps would be to communicate to the public, the intent, our communications outreach. We've been working with communications on a message for the past week. They're fantastic. If you ever worked with them, they're just fantastic at what they do. Making sure that the public understands exactly what this is all about. And then secondly, and this would be kind of the last push for the solid waste crews, is say, we're going to make a mandatory workday on Saturday and Sunday this week, so that we can get back to a level playing field. We know we're still behind in a few areas. We spent last Friday and Saturday catching up on a lot of misses, but we know there's still some areas out there that need attention. So Saturday, Sunday, final push, get out there and get everything done where we're back to even, so that we can start on Monday with the once a week collections. And then, of course, evaluate this program as we move forward, and make sure that it's doing what we said it's going to do, and make sure that we don't need to do anything else to tweak that program. And I think we're going to find along the way, there's going to be other tweaks that are going to be necessary, you know. But, you know, we have to have extra dumpsters and locations. That's what our drivers are going to be responsible for. You know, do we need extra collections in any areas? Our drivers are going to be responsible for that, saying, hey, we have a real heavy load over here, we probably need to do something about that. Our supervisors as well, you know. And again, evaluating the routing and efficiency on that is going to be our goal too. So that's really, our presentation, I know is lengthy, but I wanted to not leave out any details of anything and let you know that we're, I guess I'll wrap it up by saying that, you know, visiting with our solid waste crews and seeing what they've had to go through over the past couple of years, it's heartbreaking at times to watch. And then to see them, you know, it's that proud moment when you see someone do something that you're just extraordinary. We've seen a bunch of that, where people step up and they stay late, and they, you know, they sacrifice family time just to try to get done, because at the end of the day, I know in their heart, they want to provide the service that they're supposed to provide to the citizens of Amarillo. That's their goal every day. And when they can't do it, I know they get frustrated. I'll be glad to take any questions that anybody has and try to answer them.
Council questions?
Yes, Mayor. So, Donnie, first of all, I just want to say that, as you know, I do appreciate your department and all that your staff does. I feel like I'm an employee, because I think I'm probably sending the most, you know. Here's another issue that we have, but I appreciate the level of detail that you have provided, because it tells me that you know all the resources that you have in your department, and you're maximizing every resource. I mean, you're using it to the nth degree. I also want to just kind of ask a question. So, you know, like, during the holidays, so when I sit here and I think about it, we had the Memorial Day weekend holiday, and then we had the Fourth of July holiday. And really, that is a very short time span, but what does that do to your staff? Because, you know, I really, I don't want your employees to work on a holiday. And the other thing is, if they do work, then we've got to pay them, what, double time and a half to work on a holiday. So, but what does that do to you? Because I know when you shut down one day, that's got to push you that much further behind. But I want our employees to be able to enjoy a holiday with their families and spend time with their families.
We did too. And to answer that, it pushed it over the top as far as the numbers were concerned. We knew we already had an issue we were trying to deal with, we were behind the eight ball. We, trying to catch up was almost impossible, and the reason why is you see the numbers. But that holiday, those two holidays back to back, really, really pushed the numbers up and elevated them. That's why you saw the 275 on there. We did give them the day off on the Fourth of July, because we, there was no, there was not a discussion about that. They needed some time off, they needed a day. They worked Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday as their regular days. But their overtime days now have become Wednesdays and Saturdays. That's when they come in to try to collect everything and do it. And those are 10-hour days on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. So when they're coming in to do extras on Wednesdays and on Saturdays, it's just, like I said, they're just tired. But I think those holidays, to answer your question, just pushed us over the top as far as the numbers of missed services that we've had.
And that's what I was kind of thinking, that was probably the reason for the high spike, you know, right in this timeframe. But again, great presentation, really appreciate the level of data, because that really tells a story. And it certainly would help me understand it as well as our citizens.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And one thing to add to that, we have already discussed what it's going to look like at this level of service, should we get to our next holiday. How are we going to handle that? We're already starting to plan for those efforts as well. And I think we'll be able to do it, kind of going back to where we're at now. We would have supervisors and other people that are going to have to pitch in on a holiday, just to make this thing work, because we don't want to fall behind at this level at all. Thank you for that question.
Yes, sir.
More questions from this side?
Yes, Mayor. So, in-depth issue. Big quality of life issue. So if you'd be patient with me, let me ask a lot of questions, looking for solutions. And so, may not come up with any, but at least want to kind of do the due diligence here. So, people issue, not a budget issue, is what I'm hearing you say. So we budgeted for 42 positions for the year. We've paid out 20 positions for the year. So do you know the budget remaining? Like, do we have a chunk of change left in that budget that we haven't had to pay out for labor? I see Laura nodding her head yes. So, you've been looking for additional employees, CDL drivers, for 12 months, would you say?
Longer than that.
Longer than that, okay. How long have we been at 20?
That number, you know, we could go, of course, when we combined our equipment, all to equipment operators, that's when that stat changed, because we had different levels of different employees. But I would say, we talked about this the other day, and I would say at least 20 to 21 has been the variable since December. Every month, that's what we see, is 20, 21, 20, 19, 21, 20. And I think the year before that, we may have had a little bit more than that, maybe around the 25, 30 range, but that number's just bounced all over the place. Assistedly, probably average 22, 23.
Are we getting applications? We getting applicants in?
They interview them. In fact, they were interviewing again this week.
How many, you think, a week?
Oh, gosh. Alan could probably answer that better than I, but I, you know, if anything, I know this week, we're probably interviewing three applicants.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Just based on what we've seen, it's not uncommon to have multiple weeks where we don't have any, and then like this week, we might have three. So on average, around one a week. And then that's really making up for drivers who were losing, were losing drivers, that just get burnt out, want to go somewhere else, maybe make a little more money. And so the drivers that we get that interview and come on board are just replacing drivers that have left.
So we're having a turnover ratio of about, I mean, you'd have 40 a year at that rate, you know, on average?
We'd have to put the pen to it and get the data, but...
Okay, so...
We hire them about as fast as we can lose them, and that's why that stays steady in that number.
Okay. OSHA, typical, not OSHA, I should say, DOT regulations, mandatory rest, so much time for lunch, 15-minute break here, 15-minute break there. Is that what we follow?
Probably talking about Class A CDLs as opposed to Class B CDLs.
Okay. So are we looking at a Class B CDL?
All these are Class B CDLs, except for the transfer truck drivers, and those are Class As.
So these gentlemen and ladies are working 10-hour shifts, getting roughly 25 loads per hour on average, including lunch and a break in the morning, break in the evening, I'm assuming?
Sometimes they're working through their lunch right now. They're bringing something with them, working through it because they want to go home.
Okay. We service 18,000 residencies. So let me focus just on the residencies for a minute. Not looking at the commercial side, I think you could take that as a whole nother issue. That's paid almost on a contract-type basis, and you're servicing those, hopefully, with the staff you have. But on the residential side, you've got 18,000 residences that you're serving twice a week. That's 36,000 loads.
36,000 dumpsters a week, yes.
36,000 dumpsters. Now, is that fair in the way of, like, do we have 18,000 residences where, you know, four residences have two containers? Or what's the average?
One container for four.
One for four. So would we divide that by four on average? And I know the little plastic carts may be different.
It is. That just depends on what the homeowner wants. They can either have one or two.
So if you'll help me with my math, we have 18,000 customers.
No, no, dumpsters.
We have 18,000 dumpsters. That makes sense. Okay, so that's where I'm lost.
Close to 70,000 customers.
I got you.
Sharing the 18,000 dumpsters.
So we are doing 250 loads. No, I'm sorry, you're doing 25, yeah, 250 loads a day, 25 loads an hour on a 10-hour workday.
Well, that's the expectation. That would be the goal for each driver, that they can complete in a 10-hour shift is about 250 dumpsters each, on the average. Now, and that number's a little bit variable, Mr. Stanton, because if you're driving, like I said, in paved alleys, you can get a lot more done than you can if you're in a rough alley. Where probably, you know, those are getting 200, they're getting 300. But the average across the board, we try to shoot for is at 250.
Okay. And I have a direction I'm going with this, and, Mayor and Council, I'm not saying I have a good idea, but I think at this point, what we would agree with is that this option is the last resort and one of the worst ideas that we have to resort to, potentially, right? Like, we don't want to be here very long. So I just hope we could entertain a bad idea for a moment, if it is a bad idea. And then if it has any implementation to it with whatever hurdles we could try to climb over, I'd love to be able to hand you another tool to do the job that you're trying to do. The average revenue per house? I mean, does anybody have an average? I don't want to do the math problem on something that long necessarily, like...
Per household?
Yeah. Do you know what the average per household?
Different than every city, but I think the number's around three and a half, if I'm right.
What would that equate to?
Wait a minute, I'm confused. Just ask it again.
I'm trying to figure out how many dollars we revenue per customer.
Okay, for solid waste services.
For solid waste, yeah. So...
Per residential household, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, where I'm going with that, Donnie, is how much per load? You know, like, how much does that really equate out to? In the way of, you run your business, you run your department on either salaries, supervisor positions, I'm assuming, or hourly rates? Do you have any salary employees?
I would do, but it's superintendent.
Okay, so then everybody else that's a driver is an hourly driver? They make on average $16 an hour? So I know you're looking at maybe raising that up. average $16 an hour. So, I know you're, you're looking at maybe raising that up. Can we throw a number out there of what you're comfortable trying to increase that to? Or have you all looked at that yet?
Those are numbers that are going to be presented during the budget hearings that are coming up in the next two or three days. But I, I'm, I'm not sure where we've landed out on any of that.
Okay. So, the existing budget has remaining funds in it, hopefully. And that, I don't know exactly the amount, but, but we've, we've ran under budget for what we've spent on labor. Do we have any additional cans in stock? Like, do we have any where we could, if we're only emptying them once a week, do we have, probably not, but do we have a thousand?
Dumpster?
Extra dumpsters?
Absolutely. Yes.
How many do we have?
Oh, gosh. On hand, I don't know. We just received a couple of shipments. I know of new dumpsters. There's probably about 60, 70 of those. And then we have a dumpster repair facility as well that takes and refurbishes dumpsters, but I'm not sure what the total inventory of that is right now.
Okay. I'm just thinking of if we could double stack cans. So, I know as a customer, I'm not frustrated. If I still have room to put my trash, if I have less room in my alley, maybe there's two dumpsters close together where there used to just be one, that probably wouldn't bother me. As a driver, I'd be much more efficient in being able to empty two side by side to try to help with customer service. So, you're doing applications and you're hiring people. Are you, are you not hiring some? Like, do you have some applicants that just don't qualify? They don't pass a test? They don't get something? They, they need things?
Sure. I mean, just like with any job, you can find some there or not and don't meet the minimum requirements.
And we keep those, we keep records on those guys, right? So, we would have a database to reach out to if we wanted to. Do you have an expectation of how long you'd want to go to a once, once a week service?
I don't know that any of us know when this is going to end. You know, we've been going through it for two years. We have not seen a significant amount of improvement as far as the employee numbers. Now, what the hope would be, that as we get to the budget process and we are able to increase that wage rate across the board, that it would increase the amount of drivers that we would have, that would be the hope. That's, that's what we're...
What we're going to be discussing in budget is going to include a significant increase in compensation for CDL drivers. It's also going to include an across-the-board increase in compensation for all employees, which will also touch our CDL solid waste drivers. Compensation is not the only thing that drives, drives this. However, it is a, the, the, the big gorilla in the room on this. We will lose people to other operations because they make more short-term money. And sometimes we get them back because even though it is a high pace of work right now, it's a better long-term place to work.
Sure.
So, we sometimes get them back even though it pays less. But we've got to be more competitive on the compensation side. We're obviously being as aggressive as we can to bring as much quality of life as we can to the job. But, but, but that's going to be one of the things we'll discuss during the budget conversation.
So, we have equipment sitting around, right? Like, we, it's not that we, we have 20 drivers in all the trucks. We would have had 40 trucks running instead of 20.
Correct. 36 with six bears, 42.
Okay.
But due to some of the equipment challenges that we've had with replacing some of those, some of them are in for long-term repairs. So, we don't have a full fleet of 42 right now.
Okay. Do we, do we offer to pay for CDL training?
Yeah. We do have a CDL training program in-house. That's required now by state law.
That's great.
This is the first year where that's a requirement of state law.
How long does it take?
Pardon me?
How long does it take to get somebody licensed? If I showed up today and passed the test, how long would it take?
Longer than we, we want. But it's, it's relative to about what it takes before when we were training them in-house ourselves to get them through the testing process. But I would, what, what was that? It was either an eight or a 12.
I think it was eight, yeah, eight to 12, something like that.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for letting me get that out there. I, I don't know that I have a, I mean, I have an idea. And I want to try to propose this. And I only speak from experience for being in the construction and the trades industry where we deal with this. And so, you never like being treated as the stepchild where everybody else wants to go across the street and work. And you're always the one that's training them, getting them ready, and then you see them leave. And so, we've found in our experience that you do have performance individuals and trades that function on performance. So, the number one thing that I see as an issue for you in managing your department is that you have to crack the whip and put together motivation and push in, in a way where you cannot actually pay on a performance rate schedule. So, like, if I'm your employee, I, I want to do you a good job. I hope you're proud of me at the end of the day. And yes, I want to go home. But if I haul 300 loads of trash and my buddy hauls 200, we both made the same amount of money at the end of the day. And, and I do agree that there are other components that are motivating factors. But I think if I'm a CDL driver, a lot of the reason you're seeing people leave to go work somewhere else is strictly on pay. The hours aren't better. They're probably not in town. They don't get the benefits. I think that, that it comes down to a situation of money. So, I'm curious with Council if we could engage in a conversation or put it up for a future discussion as we move forward. I would like to see what the hurdles are in having independent contractors that we can hire. So, you take a guy who already has a CDL and you allow him to come and work for the city on a per-load basis. And you equip him in that truck and you, you supervise him. You do all the safety issues that you need to. We could put some, some parameters, some safety precautions in so that we can mitigate any, any issues that happen to go with moving fast. So, we want to move with efficiency but not move haphazardly, correct? So, with that, is there a way to look at that and break that down on a per-load basis so that if I want to work 10 or 12 hours, if I want to work six days a week, maybe this is a season of time. Maybe I'm only able to come and help my city for three months because I'm in between big construction jobs or oil and gas field or whatever. And can we reach outside of that and bring other people in that, man, they're just going to make more per-load here? At the same time and the same breath, could we then take our 20 employees and say, look, you could opt to do a per-load basis if you wanted to. We'd put you on a temporary leave from employment even though you're an employee. You'd sign up as an independent contractor. You don't lose your benefits. You don't lose your seniority. You don't lose any of this. Is this an option that we would be willing to look at rather than going to once a week?
I think as far as the, the HR issues that you're bringing up, I think I would have to defer to someone that's in that, that field such as Mitch Norman or, or Mr. Miller to talk about that. I think, I think, I will say this. I think any idea is a good idea at this point in time. We're trying to solve a problem. So, I don't think there's, there's any idea that wouldn't be listened to or wouldn't be discussed and talked about. We've been doing that on a daily basis for a long time, just trying to come up with solutions. So, the idea is appreciated for sure, and I'll defer.
Yeah. I, I think that from a staff standpoint, what I would recommend is we look at any option that anybody can provide. We would need to definitely, in, in this scenario, we're talking about contracting to independent contractors while still also providing city employees doing the same thing. We would definitely need to work with HR and legal to make sure that whatever we were proposing is legal. And, and then also to assess the management and feasibility challenges with people coming in and out of, of doing it kind of like a, I don't want to say, you're not saying like an Uber driver, but, but not on a regular basis. It, it will make the, the routing, the route management, the route performance a little bit more challenging. So, we need to work through that too, but it doesn't mean it's impossible at all.
I think just covering a few bases here, obviously, your employees that are here have a seniority and they get to kind of pick and choose. Then we, we take the routes that are less desirable or whatever. And, and, you know, as you move into that, your independent contractor would be able to work that. They'd have to go through training. You would have some HR things. Hopefully, if we've got a budget available, we could take out maybe a, additional insurance coverage that would cover something like that. Maybe we don't need to. This is something that I would look at. You said quality of life earlier. I mean, this is huge. So, for our AEDC and for our building community out there, this is a hard sell when we say, yeah, man, sorry, we're only going to be able to empty your trash once a week and we don't know when. I really want to see, does this have any ability to have some legs added to it? And could we get up and run with something like this? And maybe it doesn't solve the problem, but maybe we have to go to a once-a-week schedule for a shorter time.
Sure. And I think that's, I think we can entertain, as Mr. Miller said, any idea. I would throw this in there too, though. The community that I just recently moved from, lived there for 22 years, had once-a-week collection, and we never had an issue. Not one time did my dumpster overflow. And I lived in a, in an area where we shared a dumpster with four residents. So, and, and Alan, I will tell you this, he drove a lot of alleys last week because we were looking for areas of concern. We were looking at load levels in those dumpsters, and they vary. I mean, if you have someone that puts 20 cardboard boxes in a dumpster, you're not going to be able to fit anything in there. So, you got to take those variables out. But just as far as the loads were concerned, we didn't really see any major challenges of places where we saw overflowing dumpsters unless we hadn't been there in, in two weeks. That's where we saw the challenge.
I think the, just, one thing we're going to need to do is give you a much more detailed feedback during the budget conversations on just how this could work. There are, we need to make some assumptions that there are CDLs out there who are willing to work on a shorter-term basis than, than full-time. We also need to work through, right now, from an insurance standpoint, non-city employees aren't allowed to use city equipment. So, that's going to be something we would need to work through. And that's why when we, when we contract with individuals to come in and augment our services, they bring their own equipment. So, that's going to be something we need to work through as well. That might be the biggest hurdle we have to the idea. But it does, I'm not saying it's impossible. I'm just saying that's, that's going to be a big barrier.
I agree with you. I think you've got some, I think you've got some issues to get over.
There's a number of things we would need to work through, and none of this is, is a lack of willingness to look, turn over every single rock. I think one of the things we were trying to show with the presentation was, we've turned over everything to try and maintain, probably maintained it a little bit too long at the, at the two, which is probably some of the problem why we have the turnover that we have. Nobody's trying to sell our community on once a week. We're just notifying people that here's why we're doing it, and we are going to do it as short as possible. We don't want to do it any longer than we have to. So, we are aligned in trying to make sure that this is as short of interruption as possible.
My, my last question here. The ordinance that's in place, how long do we have to, to underperform with that ordinance before it requires a change?
Well, we would, we would need to be below once a week. So, as we're currently proposing, we are still going to be meeting the requirements of the ordinance. So, we're not proposing to underperform the ordinance at all.
Well, what I'm saying is, is, and maybe I don't understand the ordinance. Does the ordinance require twice-a-week trash collection?
It requires a, a minimum of once a week.
Oh, requires a minimum of once a week.
Yeah. Yeah. We'll go to the, so here's the language right here.
What's the benefit in changing the ordinance then?
It's a maximum of two a week and a minimum of once a week.
We're not changing the ordinance. No, we're not. We're not proposing to change.
We were just pointing out that what we're proposing is consistent with the ordinance, but we definitely want to, we understand that our community is used to twice a week.
Okay.
Or twice a week being our goal. We don't want anybody to, to hear what we're saying today as we are going to, once a week is our goal. Once a week is temporarily going to be the standard to which we, we target. And we are going to as quickly as possible be able to ramp back up to twice-a-week performance. We just wanted to make y'all aware, answer any questions Council has, and also make everyone aware that we are going to have as aggressive a communication campaign as we can to the public so they'll understand exactly when their pickups are, one. But two, and I know that we're still going to have to, to, to deal with the challenges associated with people saying, oh, they just went to once a week. That's all we're going to get forever. So, we, we definitely want people to understand we are going to structure towards, back towards twice a week as quickly as possible. But it's, it's difficult, if not impossible, to tell you exactly when that would be able to take place. We are going to make, we are going to propose during budget conversations, some aggressive moves in the solid waste and in CDLs across the board. Because the last thing we, we need to do is increase compensation in solid waste and then pull all of our CDLs out of our other departments.
Okay.
So, we're going to need to do that across the board.
I appreciate you taking the time and listening. And I, I don't want to say I brag on you all the time. Like, I, I cannot say enough about how good a job you do running this. And, and I take phone calls and emails. It's, it's a one phone call to you or to Miller and it goes to you. I don't follow up and, and the, the trash problem gets taken care of, and I thoroughly appreciate that. I want to be an assistant. I want to help. I'm willing to engage. I'm willing to look at these issues. You know, the FedEx model is something that we could look at. That, that, that is how they run their, their, their deals. So, I think that those are independently owned trucks and they have a lease system. And there's all sorts of things that I'd be willing to look at if the Mayor and Council would be willing to look at this. Because I, I believe if I can look my citizen in the eye and say, I'm doing the best job I can for you. And I, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm trying even some creative solutions here. As long as I don't put us in danger or cause an issue, this is something that I think is a quality of life issue and something that we, we need to perform on. And so, I, I am not in the way of anything that will, will be applicable, practical. And I want to look through these. And I'm willing to give you my time in trying to assist in figuring if, if this is something that's legitimate.
Thank you, Councilman. I appreciate that very much. Thank you for the kind words too.
Councilmember Sauer, do you have any questions?
No, ma'am.
Okay. I have just a few questions, Donnie. I want to start off by thanking you for your leadership, you and Alan both. I know you've worked very hard to innovate and create different solutions. And I know your staff, the people that work in your departments are, well, they're great people and they care a lot about our city and they serve the people of our city quietly, but very effectively. And I, I really want y'all to hear the gratitude. And I hope you'll take that back to them and thank them for all the sacrifices they've been making.
Thank you. They're, they're watching right now.
Oh, good. Okay. Well, everyone, we really, really appreciate all of the work. And you do get tired. And it is okay to be exhausted. So, I'm glad that you're before us saying, we have to make a change. We can't keep going the way that we're going. And so, kudos to you guys as leaders for bringing that forward. You know, I think it's interesting anytime we have a change, especially a change that's kind of thrust upon us like this, there are, there are things we can learn when we're forced to change the way we're doing something. And so, yes, our community has always had twice-a-week trash service. But what I continue to hear from our community is how can we use our tax dollars more efficiently? I'm wondering if this isn't an efficiency experiment. There may be some dumpsters that need to be emptied twice a week, but that doesn't mean that every dumpster needs to be emptied twice a week. So, I, I'm with Mayor Proten Powell in saying, this was an excellent presentation as far as the data that you brought forward to us. And I want to ask before we make, you know, whether this runs 30 days, three months, nine months, what I'm hearing is there's no way to really predict just how temporary this is. I would like to ask that you create some data metrics that you're going to track so that when the time comes for you to consider going back to twice a week, we've collected information that makes us a smarter city in how we're doing that. Because I would tell you from the Nelson family, if our dumpster only needs to be emptied once a week, I don't want to put the city out for the expense of emptying it twice a week. And I'm wondering if efficiency systems can't be created in communication? Like, like if I know, hey, we're having something unusual going on and my dumpster's full, and this is the number I should call for the twice-a-year time that my dumpster is more full than it normally is for some reason. I, I just think it might be interesting to track all of that. And I think based on the presentation you gave us today, your team might be in a position to set that data collection up. And, because I'm also wondering, I see Alan is also taking notes. So, what kind of savings would this create? What kind of fuel costs could we save? What kind of equipment costs? What kind of salary costs if this change was permanent? Not advocating for that. I'm just merely saying, since we're doing it for a minute, let's collect data and find out what kind of cost does it provide? What does it cost us to provide twice, twice a week trash service? And I'm wondering, what do you think the negative impact will be? Some, some, one negative impact is, you know, Mrs. Smith goes out and her dumpster's full and she has to walk two dumpsters down to find space in a dumpster. So, which is not a big deal if you're at my house where you have teenage boys and you just sent the teenage boys out with the trash. But if it's my grandmother and it's not that easy for her to get out there, then it's a big deal to walk down two dumpsters. So, I kind of understand that scenario. What do you think the other negative impacts are? Like, if, if our dumpster is half-full and it sits half-full for five days, are there health concerns with the trash that's in that dumpster being there for five days versus being there for three days?
If people are properly bagging their trash and putting it in the dumpster the way they should, there, there shouldn't be a concern with that. You know, I've read an old article last week and just, I don't know why this came up to me, but I was reading this article about why, why do they originally in some of these areas create twice-a-week collections? And I found an article somewhere and it, and it basically said that they had found that a fly larvae takes seven to eight days to hatch. So, they thought, well, we need to make sure that we're doing that twice a week to prevent that from happening. And what they found then later was that if they would bag their trash, then those issues go away. So, if people are properly taking care of their trash, I don't see an issue with that. Like I said, I, in the community I lived in, we had it, and I never saw a problem with any... with any of that. But I want to go back and touch on what you said about the data. Those wheels are already in motion. I'm, I'm a very data-driven person, I think those tools that we, we work on them every week, we come up with, in fact, it's funny in my office that they're always saying, hey, I found another piece of data, what about this little wheel that we could put on here? And we're constantly looking at ways that we can evaluate in pictorial format where we can quickly glance at something and see where we're at. The data that we should be able to collect from this is going to be very valuable moving forward with what we're going to be doing. And again, I, I get that we're doing this temporarily, but I think we're going to be able to learn from this situation, good or bad, what we're doing, and we're going to track every bit of that, and we'd be glad to come back at some point in time and present that to council as well with what we've learned, lessons we've learned from what we've done over the past two years is what I presented today, basically, and, and we would be glad to do that moving forward. The one thing that I see that is a challenge, the biggest challenge to me, is change. Change is just such a challenge, and sometimes when people hear the word change, it just scares them to death, and, and I get that, I totally understand that, but I think hearing the words once a week, week versus twice a week is, is a scary thought. But I think once we get through that and we start moving through it, we'll be able to see the data and see if it's really something that we should be worried about.
I think it would be interesting to communicate to taxpayers, too, this change, like just let them evaluate it with us.
Sure.
This change saves us this much money, is it, I mean, it's sort of like, what kind of car do you want to buy? Do you want to buy a Chevrolet or you want to buy a Porsche? You know, I mean, there's a price tag difference there. I drive a Chevy, so, you know, no offense to anybody that drives a Porsche, but it, it would just be curious to know, twice a week pickup, is that a Chevy or is that a Porsche?
We can give the, the, the value, the cost of twice a week versus once a week. We're going to have to make some assumptions as we go through that, and we almost have to pick an employment level to say, here's how much it costs one way, here's how much it costs another way. And, and I think that's a hugely valuable key data point for, for councils to consider as we choose how we go forward. This temporary change that we're talking about is more targeted towards just being able to pick up everyone's trash. And I know that there's a semantic difference, a semantic difference there. I think that we're, you asked, how long do we expect to be there? It's impossible to say exactly, but the reduction in workload on the short-term basis is going to help us with retention. Might not help us attract new employees, but it's going to help us with our retention rate immediately. The moves on compensation will be the biggest driver, along with the quality of life for the employees, steps that we're taking, i.e. having other people clean out the back of the truck and, and other things like that. They'll help us attract new employees. You know, that, the fact that we are going to be waiting until the next fiscal year to make the, the key moves on compensation tells us that we're going to be in this for a minimum of a handful of months. I would project sometime in, in next fiscal year would be the goal for us to be able to move back to twice a month. I don't think it's realistic to target inside this fiscal year, knowing that the major compensation moves will take place in October and beyond.
Mayor, we had a discussion yesterday to touch just briefly on that. Alan and I were having, I love having an engineer on staff because we talk numbers and we calculate, and we, we talk about these things daily, wouldn't you say? And, and I was talking about that cost that you're talking about, and he reminded me that the trash load's not going to change. The amount of trash that we're collecting is going to be the same. The amount that we're processing in our transfer station is going to be exactly the same, it's not going to change. The only thing that it may do is it may make people realize that it's better to mulch my grass than to put it in the dumpster, save a little bit of space. It may be better to break down my boxes instead of, you know, throwing them in there where my neighbor can't put their trash in there now. So, so we're having some discussions on that, and we're already building some data sets that we can start looking at the efficiencies of it as well.
So then that, I've got one quick question, then my final, final question. Residential employees, you've got 20 out of 42, and you made a reference to if you could get that to 36, that's what you need basically to do twice a week collection?
Targeted, it's 36, and the way we did that math is backing it into how many?
Yeah, okay.
Person can collect when they're out there on their route, and we have that 36, we know we're back at that 250 per day number.
Okay.
Which puts us back at twice a week.
Thank you for co-inover that math. So just the last thing, you know, the five of us are obviously communicators out in the community for you. What do we want citizens to do? I, I just heard you say, well, we want them to bag their trash, because that-
To mulch it instead of putting it in the dumpster.
We want them to mulch their grass.
Bag your trash.
Bag your-
And your cardboard.
Put, break down your cardboard. We want them to use the lids, right? Close the lids.
Use our front yard collection service.
Use curb collection. I was kind of laughing at the refrigerator in the dumpster comment, because what that tells us is that five years of messaging to the community that if it's not in the dumpster, then it's illegal, is starting to work. I mean, so in some ways, I recognize that was a real problem for your staff, and I'm sorry for that, but it made me laugh because I thought-
How do they get it in there?
It's working, people are hearing.
Was that compared to just putting it on your front?
Well, I don't know, but-
But it was in the dumpster.
People are hearing, if it's not in the dumpster, then it's illegal. I mean, you're either on the curb and you call the number, or in the dumpster, those are your two options, so.
I think the other message would be to call us. If you, if you need an extra collection, call us.
What, what number should citizens call? Like, I almost feel like we should put a sign. If Jerry Danforth was here, I would say, can we put a large sign on top of City Hall that has that number to call?
Let me give you Alan's cell phone number. What's the number to call? He's got it memorized.
378-6813.
Okay, 378-6813. And so, Donnie, then I would just say, too, that anytime I've called that number, the people have been friendly and very helpful, but from a customer service point of view, I want to say to the city manager and to you, it's really important right now that our phone skills, our customer, the people that are going to touch base with customers who are calling, they're going to be frustrated if their dumpster's full. Are we on top of our phone skills? Are we ready from a customer service point of view?
I don't know, I don't think we're there yet, but we're getting there.
We have a-
I should ask her, because she calls a lot, I know.
Just a moment, too, because we, we see one of the benefits that wasn't on any of the slides is that, and I was talking with Stephanie and Johnny about this just a moment ago before we came in here, the amount of calls that they're receiving in this office, the amount of calls we're receiving in solid waste, the amount of calls we're receiving in public works, we think are going to go down, and that's going to drop some stress levels there and create a little bit better communication from our customer service representatives. We do have some training that we are designing right now for our customer service representatives that will have messaging specifically to what they're going to say, how they're going to say that, how they're going to deal with each of these issues. We will be rolling that out next week as well to the solid waste department, and we're going to share those talking points with Stephanie and the staff over here, so that we're all speaking the same message and communicating very well with the customers. That's very important to me as well. We don't mind reaching out to them and talking to them ourselves, we've done that many times. We, we can generally de-escalate it when they find out exactly what's going on. It's been amazing to me to hear them say, oh, I, I had no idea that's what y'all were going through, we understand now. So just teaching them to, to communicate those messages instead of saying, we don't have any employees, sorry, you know, we, we want to do better than that, so. And we know there's some challenges there, but we're going to work on that beginning next week as well. I hope that answers your-
It does, I just want to know how to, how to communicate this into the community through, at least my microphone, anybody else that wants to use their microphone can, but, thank you. Okay, if there's no other questions, then I guess we'll give Donnie a break. Thank you so much, Donnie.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Item 1C is to request future agenda items or reports from the city manager. Does anyone have anything?
No, Mayor.
Do we need to take a bathroom break, council, or are we good to press on? Okay, sure, let's do consent agenda. Anything on there, council, that needs to come off for further questions or discussion? Hearing none, do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor, we do. I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by the Mayor Pro Tim and seconded by Councilmember Sauer to approve the items on the consent agenda. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes with a four oh vote. Okay, let's take a quick recess for a bathroom break and come back in about 10 minutes.
Mayor, this is a necessary step before applying for funding. Every year when we seek out federal and state funds to do our transit program. We've got Director of Transit, Chris Quigley here. Thought I'd point out, this is Chris Quigley's first presentation to council since his promotion from Assistant Director to Director.
Awesome.
So congratulations, and it couldn't be in better.
Yes, congratulations, Chris.
Thank you, and thank you, Mayor and Council. So the presentation we have for you today is to conduct a public hearing considering a resolution for authorizing applications to be put in for our federal and state funding. So the first slide I have for you is... It's been a long time since I've actually been up before you.
Jenny, can you take over?
Yeah.
There it is.
There it is. Okay. So the first slide I have for you is a resolution to consider authorization for the city manager to apply for our federal funding. We have a couple of grants that we're going to be applying for this year. The first one is our 5307 grant in the amount of $4,512,341. We also have our Texas DOT grant, operating grant, in the amount of $518,235. And then our 5339 bus and bus facilities grant in the amount of $312,983. We'll also be applying for Texas DOT development credits in the amount of $62,996.60, which we're using as a local match for the 5339 grant. Acceptance of these funds will support operating and capital expenditures for our '22, '23 fiscal year. And then the last slide I have for you is to conduct a public hearing. The U.S. Department of Transportation, in accordance with the provisions of the Title VI and Civil Rights Act of 1964, requires Amarillo City Transit to allow for public comment on projects using federal funding. Like I said, it was going to be a brief presentation just for public hearing and to consider a resolution for our grants to apply for.
Do we have any questions for Chris about that before we do a public hearing? Okay, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll open a public hearing on Item 3A. Anyone present who wishes to speak for, on, or against Item 3A may have three minutes to do so. Is there anyone present who wants to speak on this item? Hearing no one, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion on the item.
Yes, Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution Number 07-12-22-1, authorizing the acceptance of grants in the amount of $4,512,341 with the Federal Transit Administration for the Urbanized Area Formula Grant, which is 49 USC 5307, and then $518,225 with the Texas Department of Transportation for an operating grant, and $3,000... I'm sorry, $312,983 with the Texas Department of Transportation for the Bus and Bus Facilities Infrastructure Investment Program, which is 49 USC 5339, grant, and for transportation development credits in the amount of $62,996.60 with the Department of Transportation on behalf of the City of Amarillo, Texas.
Second.
It's been moved by the Mayor Pro Tem and seconded by Dr. Sauer to approve Resolution Number 071222-1. Any comments or questions about the motion? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes with a 4-0 vote. Item 3B... Thank you, Chris. Item 3B is a public hearing in consideration of ordinance number 7993.
Right, Mayor, the rest of the agenda is going to be Brady Kendrick walking us through four different items. These next two items are associated. One is the annexation, one is the zoning for a development on the west side of town. Brady's going to walk us through the first one, which is the annexation. Brady?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This is to consider an ordinance annexing into the City of Amarillo on petition of the property owner, land described as a 244.97 acre tract of unplanted land in Section 61, 62, 75, and 76, Block 9, BS&amp;F Survey, Randall County, Texas. The vicinity is Sansi Road and Southwest 34th Avenue, and the applicant is Daryl Furman for the Amerline-Bush-O'Brien-Silviaski Trust. This is a landowner-initiated annexation request that includes vacant land and public rights ways. If approved, the developer intends to construct a residential subdivision composed of 569 residential lots, a 15.26 acre tract for an apartment complex, and 79 acres of land for future non-residential development at the periphery of the proposed subdivision. This event in the annexation process is where council considers whether or not to... considers annexing or not, as well as to provide an opportunity for all interested parties to be heard. The annexation ordinance, if approved, will not be effective until the second reading. The second reading of the annexation ordinance is scheduled to occur on July 26, and if approved at the second reading, the agreed service plan that has been executed by the city manager becomes binding. Annexation is one of the primary means by which a city grows and also allows a municipality to provide services to developing areas and to exercise regulatory authority necessary to protect public health, safety, and ensure orderly development occurs at the fringes of a city. Annexation also ensures that future land uses benefit from access to city facilities and services share in the tax burden associated with constructing and maintaining said facilities and services. Included in your packet was a map of the proposed annexation area, the executed service plan, and the cost-benefit analysis. It is worth noting that if approved, the next item on the agenda is to consider a zoning plan that will establish the zoning districts within the area proposed for annexation, whereas typically agricultural district is typically assigned to areas that are annexed as a placeholder. Public notices were sent as required by state law, and as of this meeting, no comments have been received on this request.
Council, any questions for Brady? Thank you, Brady. At this time, we'll open a public hearing on Item 3B. Anyone who wishes to speak for, on, or against the item may do so at this time. Do you mind stating your name, please?
Not at all. Chris Berry, Beadmore Home, 7207 91st Street, Lubbock, Texas. I just want to tell everybody, thank you for the hard work. I know Chris and Brady and staff have talked at length with us to get this kind of underway, even as far as going and getting creative on the zoning and how that annexation gets... or the zoning gets transitioned from annexation into the city. That has saved us a couple of months and allowed us to get started as soon as possible and not kind of having to come back to you for a zoning reading and creating that specific PD. And learned a lot through the zoning process with Chris and Brady on getting PDs. We've talked about the most appropriate zoning. Got some affordable housing that's affordable in this community, and we're really excited. I'm hoping at the next reading to have some sketches for some of our park and amenities to kind of bring to you, so you can kind of see the big vision of what we want to do. We've rented this area and this community homestead. We think that has a lot of meaning for this area and kind of want to dive and market that appropriately, so be happy to answer any questions, and I'll seat myself, so you don't have to hear me get on the next zoning reading.
Any questions for Chris?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Sure.
So, from the building community, what you're saying is, is that this process was smoother than it has been in the past?
Most of it was. This is our first annexation in the City of Amarillo, so there's a lot for us to learn. I think what Chris and Brady were able to do for zoning, you know, typically when a property gets annexed, it's transitions, or it's coming to the city limits as transitional or some... something like that. Transitioning this property in the areas to PD, or R3, or multifamily is a little bit creative. I have not seen that work. We... they double-checked with legal staff to make sure that that was appropriate, and everybody has agreed that it can be able to come into the city limits as such.
And so that... that's great. I think for you to be able to come in here and say, you know, you had city staff in planning and zoning, be able to come alongside you, listen to what your needs are, and look for answers and look for ways to push your project forward. You and I both know, sometimes in the building community, the sentiment can be that everybody's just in my way, nobody will help me, they just look for hurdles to put in the way, and that it's not logical, doesn't make sense. Like, we're a pro-growth community, we want new housing, we need new housing, and what you're able to say here is, man, this process is working and that we've got some staff that's helpful. And so I just want to expound upon that for a minute, because I definitely probably am on the opposite side more than I am on this side, and so I want to make sure that when we are doing everything we can and we're looking for ways to progress your project, that we take a minute and just point it out. So thank you for speaking.
Absolutely. You could have, all within your legal rights, said, you know, "I need to come back with a separate zone case," and that's totally appropriate. To be able to look at that ordinance and dig into the legality of it and say, "Hey, I actually think we can do this." That's a big savings for us and the community. We can start getting to have the loan taxes and sales taxes quicker to the city, so absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else? Chris, I just appreciate you guys building relationships, so that you're doing a good job of communicating with us, serving on our PDP committee, all of that is part of building that deeper understanding of how things work in Amarillo and being a part of how they're going to work going forward, so just wanted to say thank you for that, too.
Absolutely. It's a pleasure to be a part of.
So can I ask Floyd a question?
Floyd, yes.
So Floyd, just to make this really successful, I'm just curious, where's the widening of 34th in the planning?
Oh, that project is in design, should be awarded, you know, a year from... right now it should be under construction.
Okay. That's a perfect answer.
Good job, Floyd.
That's really...
A-plus for Floyd.
Thank you.
I'm sure Kyle is rolling his eyes wherever he is. Like, Floyd taking my A-plus!
Yeah, I saw Kyle yesterday at Home Depot.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. Anyone else? Okay, we'll close the public hearing on this matter and entertain a motion for Item 3C.
Yes, Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 7993, annexing into the City of Amarillo in Randall County, Texas, on petition of property owner territory generally described as a 244.97 acre tract of unplatted land in Section 61, 62, 75, and 76, Block 9, BS&amp;F Survey, Randall County, Texas, in the vicinity of Sansi and Southwest 34th Avenue.
Second.
It's been moved by the Mayor Pro Tem and seconded by Dr. Sauer. Any further discussion or questions about the motion?
We've got one more.
Yes.
So how long do you think it'll take for you guys to be on the ground and running? And how long do you think it'll take you before you'll have all 569 homes built?
Well, if I have my magic crystal ball, it's longer than I want. We plan on starting dirt work somewhere around mid-August, maybe late August. We still have to take ownership of the property from the Silvieskis, and that'll take some time just to get all the paperwork together, but as soon as that's final, we have all of our plans that we need from the engineer, so as soon as we can, we'll get started on dirt work. We're planning on starting our first home sometime around September, so...
This year?
Uh, next year.
Next year?
Yep.
Excellent. Good.
And, sorry, I didn't answer your last part. We think that this could take anywhere from three to five years to build out, just depending on what that market keeps up.
Excellent. So you could build this thing out in three to five years?
Well, we'll have a minute to catch our breath, and then we'll probably need to start looking at some more property. Yes, sir.
Awesome. Thank you.
Great. Floyd, I assume that you guys are working that for CIP. I mean, that's not new news to you. Yeah. All right. Did we vote? We did not, did we?
No, we did not.
All right, let's vote on that motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, it passes with a 4-0 vote. Moving to Item 3C. Brady?
This is to consider an ordinance establishing the zoning districts, agricultural district, residential District III, moderate-density district, multiple-family District I, planned development District 400 for single-family detached homes with reduced lot depth in area, and planned development District 401 for single-family detached homes with reduced lot width on Section 1, Block 9, BS&amp;F Survey, Randall County, Texas. As previously mentioned, this item is associated with the annexation and establishes zoning districts for the land to be annexed, whereas by typically agricultural district would be assigned to serve as a placeholder. In this instance, the majority of the development plans are final, and in order to save time with the development process, staff recommended that the establishment of zoning districts and patterns via this zoning plan run concurrently with the annexation consideration. This would save the developer approximately eight to 10 weeks by foregoing a rezoning process after the land has been annexed. The recommended development type per the featuring land use and character map is general residential for the area to be annexed. General residential calls for detached residential dwellings being the primary focus, along with townhomes, duplexes, and a mix of housing types at varying densities depending on the location. The following zoning districts to be established in the area to be annexed are as follows: Agricultural District, Planned Development 400 for lots that will have reduced lot depth with an 85-foot minimum, and reduced lot area with a 4,250 square foot minimum for single-family detached homes. All other standards will follow moderate-density district. Planned Development District 401 will largely utilize residential District III standards, although they will allow for a minimum lot width of 45 feet versus the typical 50. Residential District III, moderate-density district, and multiple-family District I will be the remaining zoning districts that will be established. Land along Loop 335 and 34th Avenue is proposed for agricultural district, as the development plans are not known at this time for those areas. Those areas could develop with a mix of uses that could include retail, multifamily, office, or other appropriate non-residential development typically found on the periphery of a subdivision. Going into a little bit more detail, Planned Development 400 is the first of the two proposed planned development districts. Planned Development 400, which is the light blue at the northeast corner of the map, is to be used for cottage-style, single-family homes with those reduced lot areas and lot depths that I previously mentioned, and the product for this... these lots will be approximately 1,100 to 1,300 square feet in size at a reduced price point. This will introduce a housing product that is largely absent from Amarillo, as identified by the recently completed housing study. The second of the proposed planned developments is Planned Development 401, and that's the planned development that will allow for reduced lot width to 45-foot feet, but will largely use R3 standards for all the other standards. And this will allow for lots in this area to have differing single-family detached residential footprints and create a slightly higher density within that particular area. And the remaining three zoning districts, R3, which will allow for single-family detached homes only, moderate-density, which will allow for a mix of single-family... homes only, moderate density, which will allow for a mix of single-family products, and potentially multifamily products such as duplexes or triplexes could be utilized in moderate density, and multiple family district 1, which is anticipated to be developed with an apartment complex. The developer's zoning plan has been reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission and city staff with no objections offered. Considering this, staff believes that the zoning plan meets typical planning practices and recommends approval as presented should the associated annexation be approved.
Any questions for Brady? Brady, I'm just curious about looking at it as designed. The park areas? Will there be a pit in this neighborhood or how are those going to be maintained?
Yes, Mayor, they are proposing a pit to maintain those areas.
Good, thank you.
No problem.
That was my only question. Okay, we'll do the public hearing. We'll open a public hearing on item 3C and anyone who wishes to speak for, on, or against item 3C may do so at this time. Okay, hearing no one, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 7994, providing for the establishment of zoning districts on the official zoning map of the city of Amarillo, Texas, establishing agricultural district, residential district 3, moderate density district, multi-family district 1, planned development district 400 for single-family detached homes with reduced lot depth in area, and planned development district 401 for single-family detached homes with reduced lot width, all in section 61, block 9, BS&amp;F survey Randall County, Texas, in the vicinity of Sanci and Southwest 34th Avenue.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor pro tem and seconded by Dr. Sauer to approve ordinance number 7994. Any further questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes with a 4-0 vote. Item 3D is a public hearing in consideration of ordinance number 7995.
This ordinance is to consider rezoning a 13.5 acre tract of land being a portion of Lot 1, Block 2, South Side Acres Unit Number 4, in addition to the city of Amarillo and unplanted land, all in section 231, Block 2, AB&amp;M survey Randall County, Texas, to rezone from residential district 1 and residential district 2 to moderate density district. The vicinity is Western Street and Arden Road and the applicant is Darrell Furman for Valley View Church and Nazarene. Adjacent zoning consists of residential district 2 to the north and east, residential district 1 to the west, and residential district 1 and moderate density district to the south. Adjacent land uses consist of single-family detached homes to the north, vacant land, and single-family homes to the south, single-family detached homes to the east, and single-family detached homes in a church to the west. The applicant is proposing a change in zoning to develop the site with single-family detached and attached homes. The request would conform with the neighborhood unit concept and the Planning and Zoning Commission's opinion, given its location at the periphery of the section, adjacent to a section-lined arterial roadway, and an institutional land use to church. The proposed, the proposed zoning and development type could serve as a buffer for single-family homes to the east to the just-mentioned arterial roadway and church. Regarding the future land use map, the applicant's tract is identified as being within the suburban residential category. While the applicant's request and development plans are residential in nature, they would not strictly conform with the future land use category for this tract as the tracks proposed for development are smaller in overall size. Additionally, it's worth noting that moderate density does allow for multifamily land uses such as duplexes, triplexes, and apartments. It's worth noting that townhome development and/or zoning is largely absent within the City View Estate subdivision as a whole. These additional residential products are recommended to strengthen the neighborhood by adding a wider range of residential products within a subdivision. Additionally, the comprehensive plan does call for appropriate infill development when appropriate, and the Planning and Zoning Commission believes that this is such an opportunity. Notices were sent to property owners within 200 feet as required. Two phone calls were received, with one expressing opposition and the other expressing no opposition. It was a general inquiry. The primary concern expressed by the caller was that moderate density could allow for apartments if the developer's current plans were to fall through or change. Considering the just-mentioned, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the request as presented with a unanimous vote.
Questions for Brady, counsel? Thank you, Brady. At this time, we'll open a public hearing on item 3D with regard to ordinance number 7995. Anyone present who wishes to speak for, on, or against this item may do so at this time. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 7995, rezoning a 13.50 acre tract of land being a portion of Lot 1, Block 2, South Side Acres Unit Number 4, in addition to the city of Amarillo and unplanted land, all in section 231, Block 2, AB&amp;M survey Randall County, Texas, plus one-half of all bounding streets, alleys, and public ways to change from residential district 1 and residential district 2 to moderate density district in the vicinity of Western and Arden Road.
Second.
We have a motion from the mayor pro tem that was seconded by council member Stanley. And is there any further discussion or questions about the motion? Okay, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes with a 4-0 vote. Last item on the regular agenda is item 3E, which is a public hearing in consideration of ordinance number 7996. Brady?
This ordinance is to consider rezoning lots 3 through 5, Block 93, Plemons addition in section 170, Block 2, AB&amp;M survey Potter County, Texas, from light commercial district to planned development district 399 for increased lot coverage and reduced onsite parking. The vicinity is Southwest 8th Avenue and Monroe Street and the applicant is Charles Lynch for Amarillo Steam Team LLC. Adjacent zoning consists of light commercial in all directions. The applicant is proposing a change in zoning in order to adaptively reuse and expand an existing building on the site. The applicant's proposed use is allowed under the current zoning, although the project scope was designed with the understanding that the city's zoning ordinance rewrite recommended lot coverage maximums be up to 100% and that no non-residential parking minimums be set for properties located within the proposed urban neighborhood overlay district, which this property would fall within. With the zoning ordinance rewrite now being on hold, the applicant is requesting this change in order to move forward with this project. The property is currently zoned light commercial and maximum lot coverage is 50% and the required parking for the applicant's proposed development is 24 spaces. As proposed, the applicant's project would have a 59% lot coverage and would provide only 14 onsite, 14 parking spaces onsite. When looking at surrounding development characteristics within the area, within the light and heavy commercial districts, there are multiple commercial buildings that currently observe a lot coverage that exceeds 50%, many at or near 100% within the area, and parking areas that fall below minimum parking requirements. Additionally, the central business district zoning is approximately three blocks east of the applicant's site. This is noteworthy, the central business district mirrors the proposed development standards of increased lot coverage and no minimum off-street parking for commercial uses. Taking all this into account, the Planning and Zoning Commission believes that utilizing this development standard as proposed would not be out of character with the area nor would create any detrimental impacts. Notices were sent as required by state law and as of this meeting, no comments have been received. Considering the just-mentioned, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the request as presented with a unanimous vote.
Any questions for Brady? Thank you, Brady. We'll open a public hearing on ordinance number 7996, which is item 3E on the agenda. Anyone present who wishes to speak for, on, or against this item may do so at this time. Is there anyone? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance, ordinance number 7996, rezoning lots 3 through 5, Block 93, Plemons addition in section 170, Block 2, AB&amp;M survey Potter County, Texas, plus one-half of all bounding streets, alleys, and public ways to change from light commercial district to planned development district 399 for increased lot coverage and reduced onsite parking in the vicinity of Southwest 8th Avenue and Monroe Street.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor pro tem and seconded by council member Sauer to approve ordinance number 7996. Any other questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That item passes with a 4-0 vote. We are now done with our action item agenda and the last thing on the agenda for today is an executive session. So Mr. City Attorney, do you mind reading our dismissal language?
Not at all. Pursuant to Texas Open Meetings Act, closed session, Amarillo City Council was announced on July 12, 2022 at 2:57 PM and the following authority, section 551.072, discuss the purchase exchange, lease sale, or value of real property. Public discussion of such would not be in the best interest of the city bargaining position.
Thank you. At this time, we're adjourned to executive session. Thank you. At this time, we're adjourned to executive session.
...